Do we have anyone waiting online here?
No.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Here.
Councilman Santeen. Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez.
Here.
There's a quorum present.
Thank you. We ask that you rise if you are able to to join us in the invocation by Councilman Vasquez.
Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights. We welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. Trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In James chapter one, verse five, it says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let them ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given." We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your provision. Thank you for being with us always. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting of August 26. Thank you for everyone that's here joining us in the audience and those of you that are joining us virtually. It's great to have you with us. And we will get started with the awards and presentations. And our first award under agenda item 4A is recognizing a pioneer resident Frank Schoenberger, a longtime resident of 52 years in the city of Miami Springs. And I wanted to say a little bit about this award. The Pioneer Award is something that has been in place and available to our residents for quite a long time. And the requirements are that it's a 50-year minimum as a resident to be considered as a pioneer. The pioneer resident is selected by a board member, in this case, the historical board, our Miami Springs Historical Board. And it goes for the city clerk for approval. And then, once approved, we have the pleasure and the honor of recognizing the pioneer. And it's not something that we do that often, but I want to encourage all residents to look into it. If there's someone in the city that you feel is, just has contributed a great deal to our city, someone that we think of as a bona fide, true grassroots pillar of this community, please consider nominating him for the Pioneer Award. And with that, Frank, would you like to come to the podium and say anything?
Thank you for the consideration for the Pioneer Award. And the Miami Springs Historical Society honors the pioneers every year with a banquet that they cover the cost of the pioneer attending. And we have set that for October 12th. It'll be held at Grace Lutheran Church Meeting Hall. Word is going out to everybody, and we're still in the process of contacting pioneers.
Frank, and if someone wishes to attend, do they need to call to make reservations? Do they buy tickets?
Well, we're still in the process of doing that. We'll be on the internet soon because we have a website that we post pictures and stuff. Ken Wild is handling that. And as soon as we get a flyer put together, we'll be showing it around town. It's in the midst of being worked. We've just decided on the dates and the location. Everything's in an infant planning stage for October.
A wonderful, well, thank you on behalf of our city council, our residents, our community. We wish to thank you for being recognized, for being a pioneer. You are a true pioneer. You and your family have always been so highly involved in, particularly in preserving the history of Miami Springs. And that's very important right now as we near our centennial celebration. I just want to say that Frank and his wife Yvonne were the ones that really, really invested personal funds for the Historical Society Museum. And I remember those meetings when you had, and you're the ones that got it off the ground.
We have been with this, this is the second museum that my wife put together. She had one on 26 West Road Drive for many, many years after we pulled everything out of the second floor of the drugstore after a fire. And she put things together at that museum and kept it open during the day.
Yes.
For a number of days.
And that has evolved into...
We didn't, we don't have the current staff to keep this museum open except a few hours on Saturday. It's a different timeframe.
But you're recognizing the importance of preserving historical elements of Miami Springs, of our cities that, you know, that people might have had in their garages or something else and not particularly of interest anymore. And you and your wife and your members, the Historical Society, the founding members, recognize the importance of preserving it. And here we are, celebrating our 100th centennial with all of that, those wonderful treasures in our museum and many, many more to come. And I know the museum will continue to grow.
That's another thing that I wanted to talk about on the public speaking about the museum and...
Okay. And I have you scheduled under public forums, so we'll do that.
Public forums, there's a thing I want to address about the museum.
Okay. So let's go ahead and give you this award for the council and I. And this is the Pioneer Resident Award for Frank Schoenberger to be the pioneer resident of Miami Springs in recognition of 52 years of residency in Miami Springs and for your many valuable contributions to our community and for having the vision to recognize the beauty and potential of the city of Miami Springs. And information on our Pioneer Award is available on our website or reach out to our city clerk Erica for more information. Okay, our next award is for the, let's see, is our City Hall lobbyist here today? No, okay. The City Hall lobbyist, City Hall lobby artist. Yes?
Yes.
Oh, okay. See in the back, but I couldn't see, so we could have just stayed there. Our next award is announcing the City Hall Lobby Artist of the Month for August 2024. And the artist is Osarinko. You're going to, come on up so you can pronounce this. You go by Osas? Ina? Ina? Is that the last name? Okay, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, good evening. My name is Osasina. You know, from, born in Nigeria, so I've been an artist my whole life, I think. That's why I don't like math, because my first day in math class, my teacher drew like a stick figure. So I was like, that's not what a human looks like. And that was it. So ever since I've been drawing, I was in Ohio, and I was trained by one of my teachers, Ms. Cara Rogers. And she hired like a local artist, which turns out to be one of the biggest charcoal artists, Mr. James Pates. And I think I kind of gave up painting after the kids, so it's nice to be painted again and recognized. Yeah.
Thank you for beautifying our city hall and for giving others the opportunity to view your work and also to be encouraged to pursue art, right? So we really appreciate it. Is that your baby?
Yeah.
In the back, how old?
Five months.
Oh, my goodness. Would you like to come up too and we'll take a photo?
That's the Alamo. Louis Curtis House, number one.
No way.
Yes, it is.
Amazing. That photo in the back of the certificate is there, how the Alamo, what we call the Alamo, on 85 year. Where's it meant to be? Hey, and I want to encourage our residents, take time to come by and visit City Hall and view the creative talent of our other residents and other persons that are engaged and it can be in work or other, in other ways in Miami Springs. We love to showcase their work and it just makes City Hall more interesting and more exciting to visit. So thank you again to our Lobby Artist of the Month. And now we go to open forum and we have Mr. Schoenberger.
I'm Frank Schoenberger, 140 Morningside. The item that I want to bring up for discussion is murals. I understand that there's, you forbid murals on buildings because there was some kind of a situation with the United Teachers of Dade putting up their mural. And the Historical Society Museum is just a few blocks away from there. And its face is blank, a blank white wall that the society is putting up just a banner right now, a plastic banner announcing the museum. I would think that since we're approaching the centennial, that we should be able to mark the museum on its side, designating it the Miami Springs Historical Society Museum in a script sign that is similar to the script used by Glenn Curtis in all of his signage. And I don't consider that a mural for a place that's part of public education. We're on school property, not on city property. We're next to the, some kind of a school building that uses up all of our parking space anyway. So trying to get people into the museum on the day, Monday through Friday is virtually impossible because of parking. So Saturday is when we're doing it and having a sign on the side will aid people in identifying us. That's all I'm espousing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to approval of the council minutes for August 12th.
Motion to approve six A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen. Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to the consent agenda, and we have two items on the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull one of those items for discussion? If not, is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve nine A and B.
And a motion to...
Okay. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have the revise, sorry. We move to new business, and under new business, we have an ordinance for the first reading. And I'll let, who's going to read that?
Ordinance, yes, I'll read it. An ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter 150 zoning code of the city's Code of Ordinances by amending section 150-002 definitions and section 150-013 residential plantings, fences, and walls to add and amend definitions and regulations relating to height, materials, setbacks, and maintenance requirements for yards, plantings, hedges, and fences, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, council, as you know, this is something that I brought up a while back. It relates to really visibility and safety for our residents, for our visitors, for anyone. And it's not just the ones using the sidewalks, it's also the residents going in and out of their driveways because it's just as traumatic to be in an accident if you're hit or you're the person hitting someone else. Either way, it doesn't really matter in those cases who's right or wrong. Either way, it's a tragedy that, you know, should be avoided whenever possible. And one of the reasons that I brought it up a few years back, and I had asked Code to be sure to enforce it, it was already on our books, this is not something that is different, is enforcing the hedge heights that impact visibility around driveways, around corners, and other areas of the city. I had the personal experience of riding my bike around the block on a Sunday morning, and I was hit by a car that was backing up, a neighbor of mine that was backing up out of their driveway. He couldn't see me, I couldn't see him because his hedge was very high, it was about eight feet tall, and it was right up to the driveway. Luckily, he was going slow. He hit me, he knocked me out into the swale. My bike was mangled, I had some injuries. I had to get stitches on my hand and stuff, but for the most part, I was very grateful, he was very grateful. I can tell you, he was very upset, very traumatized by it. And even though I, you know, we discussed it, and I said, you know, the hedge has to be so there's visibility, you just need to cut it back to like three and a half feet. The next day or the day after, he had the whole hedge pulled out, the entire hedge. He goes, you know what? I never want to have an experience like this again. And not that long ago. And so I'd asked the city to enforce that. They've been doing that, but the hedge ordinance wasn't that clear on some spaces. It had some areas where we just needed to tweak it to make it easier to enforce and to get the message across of what we mean. Obviously, we love our landscaping throughout the city, we love green and, you know, and plant life and everything. We're talking about areas where the visibility is impacted to the extent that it poses a serious danger to pedestrians and to those in, and pedestrians, bike riders, and those in vehicles. So with that, recently, another resident reached out to me and said they were jogging and almost got hit by their neighbor. Same situation of a hedge that was really high, close to the driveway. He's jogging, he can't see the driver, and the driver can't see him. And by the grace of God, you know, he narrowly missed being hit. But he was very concerned because he said throughout Miami Springs, when he jogs, there's these situations. So we asked that at the recent council meeting, we directed the staff to go ahead and update the hedge code so that it, hedge and fences, front yard, hedge and fences, so that it better reflects the safety requirements that we need to enforce. And with that, that's where we are right now.
Your chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to pass 11-8.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, the one thing that I do want to say is that JCR City Manager will be working out a plan to, an awareness program for our residents to remind them of, you know, what's required in our hedge code and in our fence codes, and also giving some time for people to comply when violations are identified.
As you know, this is the first reading. As second reading gets closer, we'll begin the public information campaign and get the word out.
Okay.
And just, I don't think you mentioned this, Mayor, but this also addresses the overall hedge heights throughout the property as well, to maintain it at eight feet. I've been driving around and I've seen anything above eight feet gets hard to maintain, and it kind of looks a little messy. So that's something else, that's another part of this as well.
That's in there. So it really does address cleanup, a lot of like little openings in our code that weren't that clear. So with that, if there's no more discussion, yes ma'am?
I just had one question. In the, it would be page four of six of the ordinance. It says here, hedges within corner visibility. So if it's a corner lot, for instance, would they have to, on their side lawn, it could be eight feet, but in that specific corner, it would have to be three and a half and then go back up to eight feet? Or since it's a corner lot, they would be able to have a cohesive corner with that height of eight feet?
Of Sylvia coming here. But the point, the point of it, and Sylvia will add to it, the point of it is by the driveways to have clear sightlines.
Right. Three and a half feet. That I'm okay with. I was just wondering, based on the picture, I can see here, I just want to make sure because we were like, oh, well, how can I have it in the corner? And then it has to go down and then back up. But I don't think it applies. Maybe I'm interpreting it not the right way.
Oops. Can I be allowed to share my screen, please?
She needs to be hosted.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Sylvia.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure, I'm sure you're thinking about it, but along with the information, some visuals of what are good, or are and are not acceptable.
Yes.
I know for people like me, you know, I like to see it and that, yeah, thank you.
I think the host has to.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm glad you raised this. I mean, what happened to you?
You know, it could, and I was riding a bike, but if I had been pushing a stroller or a lot of, the stroller would have been hit first. If a lot of residents in Miami Springs, you know, ride bikes with their kids and the kids go in front, ride their bikes in front and a parent is behind. So there's so many possibilities. And really, when something like this happens, we wind up correcting it, like my neighbor did of tearing out the whole hedge. You know, so it's, let's prevent this before it happens, and we can still be a lush, beautiful, green city. But we also are very, very proud of being a walkable pedestrian-friendly city.
All right. Thank you for your patience. I want to start by, I know the mayor is being extremely subtle about this, but the fact is that your ordinance did not have any height limits for hedges. None. So not only could they go all the way up to the heavens, but there also weren't any standards for maintaining them in any way. So that's one of the things that we have tried to introduce. And so on the sides and the rear, the hedges can go up to eight feet. But within that yellow area that you see delineated there, which is representing the corner on the north side of that little diagram, and then the little yellow areas that sort of jut out from what is depicted as the driveway within those yellow areas, any plantings that you have as far as a hedge or a fence as well, because it applies also separately to the fence section, cannot be taller than three and a half feet. You can have trees, but the trees have to be clear within that area that you see to a height of eight feet. Yes, that's it. So, sorry, I go down. There. So, yes, that is, that is the idea. If you're coming down around the corner, that that little area is clear enough so that you can see anyone that is coming on the sidewalk or even on the street from the corner where like you can see the little car, right? So the purpose is to maintain that clear area, that visibility triangle in the corner.
So here on the green side, it could be eight feet, but when it reaches to that corner, that corner lot would go down to three and a half.
Correct.
And then it kind of had a little gap there, but basically it just...
Yeah, it has a little gap. It shows us a little gap, but you know, I don't think...
Like at the driveway, I just, I don't know if people are going to like the corner idea.
The idea of the corner is, as you're, if you're in some areas here, you have a stop sign, you have clear, you know, you have no stop sign coming the other direction. So in one of those cases, if you have a very high hedge, it could block the visibility and somebody ventures out into the roadway and...
The visibility of who though?
From the road.
For cars and pedestrians and cyclists.
And to...
It's just maintaining across the way that, you know, all of our corners, as much as possible that we are cognizant of, you know, safe, I mean, people get hit by cars all the time and with very bad consequences very often. And so this is just cognizant that we're a pedestrian-friendly, a walking city, but also that we want to make sure that going around our city is safe as much as possible.
And just for clarification, this is the sort of standard way in which visibility triangles are applied. You know, you do it with your walkway, you do it with your driveway, you do it with your corner. And it typically is a rule that applies equally to your hedges as well as to your fences. You already had a limitation on your fence height that is similar to this. So now we have it also applying to your hedge.
Yeah, I don't know about, I don't live in a corner lot. I was just, I can see how people are like, oh.
Also, Sylvia, that was a very good point about the hedge heights throughout that we have, you know, in some cases between houses and hedges that are very, very high, they're no longer, no one can get up there unless you pay a good deal for landscaping. And also the houses are closed by, so maintaining, keeping the hedge height to eight feet is something that I think is very reasonable. That's about it.
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I've, you know, went a bit through the city, and there are areas where you got a stop sign, right? And you're supposed to stop at the stop sign and then inch up a little bit because sometimes you don't have clear visibility. And there are quite a few intersections where there's no clear visibility. You have to inch up and then inch up a little more just to get a clear view of the traffic that's coming on either side of you. So. I can see taking out some of my bushes, too.
With that, if there's no more discussion, could you call the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Here, thank you. And thank you, Sylvia, for all your work with our TAMI and the building department, trying to make something that, what I like about this ordinance too is it's very clear, it's very simple. It's not a complicated ordinance, you know.
Yeah, no, we needed it. We needed it.
Okay, thank you so much. And then we move to item 12A, and it's a request by Councilman Santeen to discuss... item twelve A and it's a request by Councilman Santin to discuss dumpster enclosures.
Yes. It's been obviously brought to our attention on certain areas that there is an overflow on some of the restaurants and businesses. And, you know, we've seen it for a while, for a long time, as long, many years that I've been living here. But as time goes by, it seems like it's something that's left to the side and no one really enforces it. And it's something that we don't want to see when people come to visit, walk in that particular area. The smell is pretty strong. And it's just not sanitary to to do that. And then, you know, we looked into our ordinance and you find out that we have a lot of things in there already in place. And it was just that we don't have enforcement of things that we have in place. So I think obviously I like to see some tweaks to it, like, you know, maybe a reference to the maintenance of those particular areas. And also maybe have a discussion about some of the properties that have their grandfather in the sense that they don't really have much real estate there to do much with an enclosure. It doesn't mean that you leave your garbage containers without, you know, lock. You should at least lock them, should be conscious of maintaining them. I think overall it's just that we need to enforce what we already have. And maybe some tweaks to it. And like I said, in reference to the maintenance. And if you don't do what you're doing, then you're there's going to be a fine for it. The lids need to be closed. And like I said, in perk, in particular with the ones that don't have the real estate to do the the enclosure. They definitely need to have a closed lit container. And then for those that do have the real estate, we need to kind of do what the code says. You need to have a gate. Maybe we can change some of the language where it doesn't have to be masonry. You could, because it says there we can use chain link. But if you do the chain link with some the gate, because the cost is expensive for these businesses. So I'm not, you know. I realize it's a big expense, but still at the same time, a chain link could be done well where you have like a slate or like a mesh, not mesh, because a mesh with the wind looks really, doesn't look very good.
A covering element.
But a cover element that would cover the the gate part of the of the enclosed masonry areas. Because right now we have them, but the front part where the container is at has no gate. And of course, anybody can come by and and start dumping stuff illegally.
They've already done it.
Which they're doing.
Many times.
I mean, ultimately that comes down to, you know, we're not going to be able to start policing who goes in in places and do illegal dumping. But the reality is it comes down to the owners of these properties. There's something in our code, maintain it, keep the lids on and so forth. Have a secured gated area or in this particular enclosed area. So I just think enforcement, and I guess, you know, we'll hear later from our city manager. But we did have a lot of stuff in our books to my surprise. But for years, I guess, you know, we haven't decided to do anything about it, but I think it's time to do it.
Comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the other thing is that a lot of these dumpsters are where we also have public parking. And and it ties into, you know, like wanting to make the parking spaces that we do have accessible and to encourage people to park there and want to walk places if you're walking past. You know, a dumpster that's open. I know that the health department requires that your dumpster be closed on top of the fact that it may be part of the city ordinance, but you know, I'm 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 thinking about several places where we have public parking that the city has that there are dumpsters and if if they're throwing garbage and some of the pictures that we've seen. That that's not going to encourage anybody to to utilize those those parking spaces. So I I agree that it's it's something that we should that we should enforce.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. In addition to that is that sometimes they don't stay in place, right? You know, the parking spots and then there the dumpster roll down a few feet. You know, so it's closer to the middle of the parking area. So, you know, with the enclosure and 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 being able to keep them in place. I know they you know, the the garbage has to be picked up and it has to be you know, fair amount of access to be able to pick up the dumpster and so forth. I've seen that a couple of times behind Mylum and and other areas back there with the Starbucks is, I've seen that in particular.
No, these are all good comments and I know for myself, I feel very strongly that maintaining a dumpster means maintaining it in good condition. So if a dumpster was designed to have covers to it and those covers are missing, it's no longer functioning the way it was designed to do and it needs to be replaced or the covers need to be replaced. It's, you know, if it's mangled and it's leaning over to a side or anything, it might still be a dumpster and can hold trash. But it's not being maintained in the proper and it and we need to enforce and perhaps put something in our code if that's not already there of that kind of requirement that it's not just having a dumpster. Well, you know, it still holds trash. No, it has to be a dumpster that is in good condition presentable. I I don't know what wording we would use. The other thing that I think that came to my attention recently is that we have businesses in Miami Springs that in facilities that don't really have a way to get rid of their trash. So I think that that needs to be explored, evaluated. I can't imagine a business being in place and not having a means to, you know, a designated place to get rid of their business trash. And in some cases it might be very small, you know, if they're not a restaurant, it might be very small, but nonetheless. I doubt they're taking it home with them every day when they empty their their trash cans. So I think these are all things that probably we need to look at and perhaps just like Sylvia did with the hedge, you know, it's there, but making it more facilitating the enforcement of the things that we want to enforce, you know, and making sure that the things that we want to see. Look, when when somebody reports a dumpster or trash can overflowing or a dumpster overflowing or whatever, before they've reported it, over a hundred people have seen it. You know, that's just the person took the time to report it, but people are driving back and forth. It's very unsightly and it shouldn't be. So two things with that is I want to encourage our residents. We have something in place, we pay for it. It's called See Click Fix Act. See Click Fix, see, like see it, fix it. And see click, sorry, see click and then we fix it. And please use it, download it. It's so easy to use and it's something that instead of having to wait and, you know, and call and, you know, figure out who you're supposed to talk to, all you do is you take a picture with this app and the app works you through it as to what's the complaint and it sends it to the city. It lets us know and and always I tell everyone, assume we don't know. Maybe we know, maybe we've got a work order on it, maybe it's the county or the state that has to repair it and we know about it, we can't do anything about it or we're waiting for parts, but maybe you're the very first person that's brought it to our attention, just like an overflowing dumpster. Everyone's seen it, but it hasn't been brought to our attention. So please give us a chance, an opportunity to know what concerns you so that we can try to address it, or at least we can tell you where we are in the process. And I think that that that's important as residents go through the city and they see these kind of situations that are unsightly. Let us know so that we can try to to address them and correct them. And what I guess would be, I want to see if the council would like to direct the staff to kind of review. You said you found that we have many of the codes in place, but just do a review and if you see something JC that where we need to strengthen, clarify, add some teeth to some of this, that that you go ahead and and do that and then bring it to the council for.
Absolutely, Mayor. I've already instructed code to enforce the the provision that we currently do have in the code. Most of them are in or a lot of them are in there. There are still other I guess, components that are not addressed in the code in the code, meaning the frequency of restaurant pickups. That service, in my opinion, should be daily. Because you can't leave food waste out there cooking a couple of days until your garbage is is collected. It's it's a health hazard and it's disgusting. So I'm going to look at that as well, but right now I I do have code. They're going to start enforcing it and and enforcing whatever we have in 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 place. Wherever the gaps fall short, short, we will address and in in a code revision.
Yeah. And I don't want to, it's not only for the businesses, but for the multifamily properties too. Because we have multifamilies and we also have apartment buildings. I don't want to call it out, but I am. Is it Saratoga? They have the parking lots and then they have a standalone trash can that for most, for the most part, those trash cans are going to get overloaded a lot more often, right? Because people live there. So we do have here a multifamily ordinance on garbage, which says that it has to be a maintained landscaped enclosure. But it's impossible because that's all pavement. So I think if I'm totally on board with revising the ordinance, but also making it where in in cases that are reasonable, in this case it is because they have the real estate to do an actual enclosure where you don't see it. Because there's also people going to these apartments and also dumping stuff too, which is not fair to the residents.
That's correct.
So.
It happens. If you don't protect it, somebody's going to dump in there.
So definitely not just for businesses, because we're supporting our businesses by addressing this situ- this situation. But also for for people that live here and live in the apartment buildings.
And overall, it beautifies our city, which is what we want and promotes good citizenship. So. Okay, anything else on that? All right. Yes, sir.
Sure, I think I talked to JC off. Yes, but in reference to considering that we as a city for a long time have not enforced this. It's really on us. So now I I would like to see right off the bat, when we do enforce it and we go to these business owners. You know, be a little bit neighborly and give them a courtesy warning. I'm saying three, two, three, four warnings, one warning. But definitely don't give them a letter with a fine from the from the beginning. I think they need to have a little, because we haven't done it. So even though it's wrong, but I'm saying another stuff too, because it's not just the garbage. A lot of things that we haven't enforced over time and they're getting these fines right off the bat where, you know, give give them a courtesy call because we haven't done our job. So, but I'm not telling two or three warnings, about just one warning and and we'll go from there.
No, what what we'll do and and when I directed code earlier today. I said, start off with a code with a courtesy notice. We'll do a courtesy notice. Written notice saying, hey, this is a courtesy, please take care of it. If they don't take care of it within the time that we ask them to, when we come back around, then we issue the notice of violation. And then we give them at that point, sometime to correct it before fines start accruing.
Through the chair. One last thought. When we have the the businesses and this, he's received something where a a local business by, you know, we have like these small businesses with different units and they have property to that they have to maintain landscape. So their landscapers will come cut down. Obviously, it's too much bulk for their trash to handle. If we can go ahead and let them know that when they're going to have their landscaping done and trees and stuff removed to get a service that holds that for them. Because all of that to put in their trash can, like we said, they're they're very limited on their their trash can size or their their dumpster size to use.
Honestly, and and I'm not sure how the code is written here as far as landscaping. Services. I'm used to, if you're going to hire a landscaper.
They take it with them.
Take it with them.
They do.
And I'm not, I'm I'm not sure how the code is written here. I have to look it up. So they should take it with them. That should be part of the code and and if you do your own landscaping, well, that.
Yeah, because we see the landscapers attending and then they're dumping it in local business dumps. And I think that's one of the issues that we were having here. And now we're just on the topic.
Not even, not even in local bit, they just dump it in a pile, you know, outside, so.
No, but for example, with my business, they said, hey, listen, I was approached by the city, when you guys do a landscape, don't use a dumpster. You guys got to take, just make sure you're taking the trash because you're working. You're not going to be worrying about they're doing their job or not. You're you're in your office. I just wanted to.
Yep, but I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you. Being a city and I'm being a city that has bulk pickup weekly. It gets around, the word gets around by the landscapers are like, hey, you can just take your 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 load to to Miami Springs and and leave it there. If you don't get caught, some they'll they'll take away your trash.
But take it where?
That because we pick up, we pick up, we pick up bulk every week.
And in residential areas.
Yeah.
I had it happen in in my, I had it happen in my front yard a while back. I was in the front yard, but I was near the house, so you couldn't really see that I was there. And a pickup truck, just a regular pickup truck came, our garbage pile is in the front because we don't have an alley. And a pickup truck came and quickly just dumped all their trash in my trash pile and took off. And while, you know, when I'm seeing him doing that and when I start screaming, he just gets in and takes off. He dumped everything and it was just it wasn't hazardous waste. It was, you know, their waste that they had. So word does get around and I think that part of that is you know, if we, the word gets around that we're enforcing it, that it's not tolerated. And Councilman, I don't think it's not that we weren't enforcing it. I think we were enforcing it when we noticed the violation or when it was reported. And we weren't doing a consistent effort because if it was reported, you know, somebody complained, then yes, code would go there and check on it. And by no means am I, you know, disparaging code because I know they've got their hands full and the reality is sometimes that's about all you can do is respond to. You know, what happens, but if we're enforcing it consistently and if we have the assistance of our residents in bringing it to our attention, these areas that you see that are being violated so that we can have code enforced. I mean, it's, you know, it's it's a collective effort here. It's, you know, codes and and laws on the books are only as good as, you know, as in reality. They can, they're respected and and can be enforced.
If I may, I want to bring up just two comments because Councilwoman Bravo, you brought up the fact that we're not enforcing it much with multifamily. I beg to differ because I know that Liz and Rachel from our public works department spend spent exhausting hours for at least a month, month and a half, going through all of the multifamilies every day. Rachel would walk all of the multifamilies on South Royal Swallow Drive and report to our code enforcement officers whenever ever there was bulk trash that had been dumped prior to the twenty-four hour period that is part of our code. We were giving out notices all the time. South Royal has made a major improvement on their side to make some improvements to that. We're still working with the swallow swallow side. We just had a complaint today. Oh, that wasn't my garbage. That I didn't dump it there. Somebody illegally dumped it there, but what do we do? We gave the notice to the property owner. And, you know, that was the first thing they came and said, oh, that's not me, somebody illegally dumped. Well, we don't know who illegally dumped. And as a property owner, you're supposed to maintain your property, maintain your swales. So it's hard. You know, code enforcement is hard for for them. And then the second point I want to bring up is, yes, we do it all the time. Mayor brought up not too long ago, a couple of months ago, the behind the businesses over here, a dumpster was overflowing. And as soon as we saw it, we had public works go and pick up the excess around. We had code enforcement issue a warning if they they had so many days to correct it. If they if they didn't, then they were going to be fined. They also, code enforcement also did explain to them that they had to include increase their frequencies if it wasn't being picked up or too much bulk was being put into their dumpsters. It is a free, you know, it's a dumpster that anybody can dump in, so we had that issue. But and then lastly, I just wanted to mention is that we have one one code enforcement officer for all of our commercial, all thirty-sixth street downtown here. So it's it's hard. It's hard. I'm not saying it, but like Mayor said, if we can have people report it, see, click, fix is a excellent way to do that. We can get things done quicker. I'm not saying that, you know, we can't try to transition some of the other code enforcement officers, but between residential, commercial, it's it's hard to keep up with just three and and code enforcement officers.
No, and I I didn't say that code wasn't doing their job or I I know that they're working on it. What I meant was because since we're talking about updating the ordinance was maybe to reinforce on the multifamilies to actually develop enclosed trash cans for for them too.
Absolutely.
That's all.
There's always improvements that can be.
So if they're going to dump something, they dump it on the inside, you won't see it.
As a matter of fact, Mayor asked in in an email after she received the the email that you all received. She asked for a plan in place. I gave you a plan. I sent it.
Very good.
Within the next couple of days, I gave Mayor a plan of what our plan was. How we were going to approach. Um how we were going to approach the commercial dumpster. I sent it, Mayor has it, so.
Okay, I mean, do you want to reshare?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Want to read that out or you've sent it to the, okay, it's quite a bit. Can you send it to the council, please?
Send it out.
Yes.
Think that that's fair. Got one person for all the commercial, that's not fair. Uh but in reference to what you were saying about past times of code enforcement not enforcing. I I bear to differ on this, because I think it's nothing to do with the mains. When it, when there's a overflow and it's really bad, of course, they do something about that. But for many years. The mentality has been, let's not bother our businesses. They're here, they came to us, we don't want to bother them. By giving them more of a hardship than they already have, by making the decision to come to our businesses, to our area. So a lot of the maintenance on those enclosures, those are violations right off the bat already. And it was not having a gate, not having a lid, not having an enclosure. So they weren't overflowing with garbage, but they were already against our ordinance and nobody said anything about it. Because the mentality was, don't go after our business owners, because, you know, they're here to do business. Well, can't have cake and eat it too.
That, and that brings up a a great point as well. Um the last, the most recent case that we just had, that was an ongoing violation. Unfortunately, they had so many days to correct, to correct it. They corrected within the days, case, case gets closed, that's it. In this situation, we were able to give that that particular dumpster. Um the owner of that particular property a five hundred dollar fine. So when people don't think things are getting done, they are getting done. They just got a five hundred dollar fine, because they were repeat violators, so.
Mayor, it clearly there's there's an issue. We'll we'll get it resolved. We're going to um work together. Um meet with uh with code um and strategize in the best way of getting it done. And any gaps in the code?
You bring them to us and you.
Get it. It's not, it's not rocket science. We we'll get it, we'll get it done.
Wonderful. All right, thank you so much. Um with that, we um move to reports and recommendations. The city attorney.
Done this evening, um just to echo what was being said on the last item. Uh the code definitely could use improvement. Um I think we've said that on so many different code sections. Um it's just a matter of doing it piece by piece. Um just like you saw with the hedges, we're working on the RV ordinance. Um so and and I think Tammy said it, there's always room for improvement.
This is always a work in process. A a city is always a work in process of, you know, constantly improving where you can. And um and trying to to do the best we can for the city. And I don't think ever any city is one hundred percent, you know, accomplishing everything it would like to. But um as long as we're cognizant of it and heading in that direction and trying our best and. And really, um a lot of times complaints are what directs our attention, you know? So I always encourage residents, talk to us, you know, just because you're talking among yourselves in some little Facebook chat or something, we're not listening to that. You know, that doesn't, believe me, there's no one at City Hall being paid to scroll through Facebook and say, oh, I saw this comment. So if you, you can talk among your friends, everything like this, that's wonderful. But if you have a concern, be sure that, or a question, be sure that you bring it to one of us on council. City manager, city um assistant city manager, or city clerk, uh public works director, you know, whatever department it is. But um unless it comes to us, we don't know about it. Yes, sir.
I had a question for Heidi. Uh correct me if I'm wrong, but uh I I believe. The historical society can put, can paint their logo on the building. And it would be a business sign and not considered an artistic mural. Is that correct? Right, so we should probably reach out to clarify that.
I don't know that you can.
I think Heidi's ready to answer.
No, no, on our signage.
I I don't want to say yes or no. I'll confirm on the code.
Okay.
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 So.
Whatever, whatever the answer is, if that could be relayed, because I think I remember that. Came up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um. Heidi, were you finished? Okay, all right, let's go to um our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um our Veterans Memorial, we're having a meeting tomorrow with the with the committee. Um some adjustments are being made and we should be out to bid, hopefully. End of the, end of the month.
End of the month, we're waiting. Uh I met with Manny.
Yeah, there there's some design revisions being made, so we can reduce the, you know, the the scope slightly, so we can. Reduce the cost. Um going to meet and discuss those changes tomorrow. Hopefully, we're all in agreement and then we'll be. Getting the final set of plans and going out to bid. I I am determined to have this project done before end of year, so. Um and uh let me see, tomorrow we have the meeting with the hotels and the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. At the, at the country club. So if it's open, if anybody wants to attend, it's, you know, you guys can come in.
How was I?
At nine AM. Okay.
All right.
And and then we recently had a meeting, the mayor and I, we had a meeting with Miami Dade County Public Works out in the circle. Um to discuss um not not just traffic, but also pedestrian safety. So we had a lengthy discussion there. We'll see what comes out of that. We're trying to make some improvements out there in the in the circle and along Curtis Parkway. To make it safe and allow residents to be able to, around the circle area to connect to the restaurants that they want to without having to go all the way around. So we're working on those things. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tammy. Assistant city manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um I I know Mayor mentions it almost every summer about swimming lessons. So they have the uh the fall swimming lessons starting in September. So just make sure to uh register for those of you who want to register. And also to register for any water aerobics classes that are, um there's open classes now at the Aquatic Center. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, let's start with um the vice mayor.
Just thankful for uh all of our efforts up here on the dais and for staff and all of their hard work. Thank you.
Councilman Vasquez.
Um echo that and uh had a cough, right? I'm feeling much better, thank you. Like I would. Um delighted today that my son Victor Angel started as a junior at FIU. In the public history um program. And uh I think they're still there. There was a an activity at six PM at the Pitbull Stadium. For parents and 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 students. Um and uh he can't wait to drive there, so. They drove down, he drove with his mother. I'll get a report later when I get home. I'm ready to just let him, hey, you got a driver's license. You've had it for a couple of years. Let him drive. Thank you, man.
Okay, uh councilwoman.
Um no, uh thank you for productive meeting, Mayor. Thank you for bringing up the ordinance for the residential plantings. That was long overdue. Um and, you know, it contributes to our city beautiful, right? And Heidi, thank you for reminding me about my recreational vehicle ordinance that we now have to start working on. Now that we're past the trees and a school started and we can get back to business. On top of the other items that we're working on, right? And there was one thing, oh, and happy Labor Day weekend. Hope everybody has a safe Labor Day. That's it.
Councilman Santin.
Thank you as well for our city council, that you have to work with.
Your mic, your microphone is on.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not off, it's nervous, but if I go.
You move it, it probably turns off, yeah.
Anyway.
I think it's tired.
Staff, we have, appreciate it. And uh look forward to uh the fall. It's an exciting time for our community. When we get a chance to really stand out and show what a community is about. So to me is is definitely one of my favorites and we have a lot of activities going forward. And uh hopefully we can uh, you know, like we said earlier, every time we can do something and improve it, even better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And on part, I just wanted to say this hedge ordinance goes, follows up with the tree ordinance that we recently did of just, you know. Overall, we're looking at these things of, you know, we love our landscaping, we love our lush tropical um environment. But, you know, um we also want to make sure that, you know, that it's in the best condition and that we preserve as much as we can. And um take responsible action where it's needed. And the only other thing I wanted to say is um Labor Day. Um weekend is always um the mid mark for me of hurricane season, so we've gotten through this far. Hopefully, we will make it through without a storm in place, but please don't let your guard down. Um please prepare and be ready, you know, these things can pop up in a day or two. And um make sure that you've got as much as you can ready to go so that, yeah. And realistically, having as much as you can ready to go means that you can help your neighbors who might need a little extra help. So I'd like to encourage everyone, we're that kind of community that after you get yourself situated, God forbid, should something be coming our way. Um you know, look around and see if if we can, um if one of your neighbors needs help. And if you can't help them, reach out to us and let us know. We have a lot of resources that um we'll try to to make sure to reach out. So with that said, have a wonderful evening. This meeting is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I guess that that's no longer.